Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk take the roll please.
Mayor Bro, District 1, Morissette.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Radamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Virchell.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present for any item that's not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
I'm Gordon Kennard.
Yes, Gordon.
Thirty-six, Seagulls Nest Circle, Hudson, Red Cedar Canyon. This is not a complaint. This is just some comments that I'd like to put forward as I've been thinking. It kind of starts off with David Selison's comments at the public hearing on budget recently where he was very concerned about security in the city and proposing that more security forces be brought to bear in Hudson. And I've heard this from a number of other places. I think at the public meeting that Acting Chief Atkinson had on the shooting that there were concerns expressed there, although I wasn't present, read in the newspaper about the concerns expressed about security in Hudson. At the meeting on the nineteenth, the council meeting, Mr. Radamacher made a proposal about some way of generating funds to add security forces. That got withdrawn pending new chief coming in and really developing a plan. And I think that decision was a good plan. If it plays out that we really need to increase security, it sounds like it's going to cost a lot of money. And we have budget difficulties in the city. We're limited by the state as we know, as we've gone through this budgeting process. That probably the only way to, excuse me, the only way that we're going to be able to fund any major needs if it's justified by the new chief, to, the expectations of the council, is to have some kind of referendum and get the approval of the people. The most time cost efficient way would be to have that referendum in April, at the next election, early April. That's about four months away. Now, a number of things have to take place between now and then. We need a new chief onboard. He needs to do his analysis and come forward with a proposal. But can we be thinking about the possibility that we would want this on a referendum? I don't know the steps that are needed to be taken. And I guess I would appreciate comments from a city attorney and a city administrator about what kind of steps have to be taken and what kind of timeline do we have to be on in order to be efficient about handling any potential referendum. Okay? Welcome comments.
I haven't looked at if the new statute's the same as it was two years prior. I'm assuming that the referendum process would be the same. The referendum has to include not just, "We want to increase it by $500,000 for purpose X." It has to be, "This is what the budget would have been. This is what we're proposing it be," which probably means it'll, would have to be in the fall, once we get our numbers in. So it isn't a thing where in April you could, again, I would have to check to see if there's any changes, where you could say, "We want to increase it by $500,000 for the police department." So that's the way it was written before. So they normally took place in November, just because that's when you would have the full budget.
But I think it'd be a good idea.
Yep, I will follow up on that, yep. And I don't even know if they have the statute ready yet. I mean, I'd assume they would, but...
Didn't at one point we talked about educating the citizens through some paper clippings and getting them up to speed? And as far as the papers concerned and trying to identify and educate the needs to the public in being in favor of a referendum? I think that was what we talked about, to do it in the fall.
And that can take place, right. I mean, that, the education process can start whenever it needs to start.
Mm-hmm. And that, that I'm in favor of, for the papers to clear that up.
But I will determine, I'll find out on the date to see exactly if it's the same as it was before. If it has to be the whole budget.
Might I ask that we also do some longer range planning? Because a referendum, should it pass, is only good for that fiscal millennium until the state legislature meets again to decide what to do about budgeting. And then we would have to have another referendum to maintain what we've already started. So we need longer range planning.
Right, and the old statute, you could only do it one year at a time.
Well, Gordon, as I remember how we left that, as soon as we get a chief in that particular chair, we'll be asking him for his recommendations, giving him enough time to be able to put recommendations together. But we had an alternative approach with some monies to be made available for some of the recommendations that he would come forth with. So we might have 50% of what our needs are during that particular time, depending on how much money is available. So we're kind of putting that money that Paul had discussed initially away so that we can make the proper changes that maybe the new chief would like to put into position. And that certainly would be probably for, I'm guessing, the last half of 2008. So we will get something done there. That, in combination with a referendum, should put us in a pretty good position for the 2009 budget. That's the way I recall us approaching that particular situation. So it's not dead, it's not over. We're just waiting for the appropriate time to maybe have a change in our existing budget as it stands today. But some good suggestions, and we're certainly looking at that. And Devin will take a look at the law changes if there were any. Okay? Anyone else like to approach? Yes.
Hello, I'm Kim Heineman. And on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, I just wanted to take a moment to personally thank the city, the business community, and the community members for supporting all of our holiday events that have been going on over the last few weeks. The town looks beautiful. We've had so many great compliments. And this partnership has been just fantastic. And it's all about supporting our local business economy. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Kim. We appreciate all that you do for the city as well. Anyone else? I'd just like to make a comment before we get into where I'm usually speaking. And that is, I want to compliment our Public Works people for the fantastic job that they did with the snow removal. And there's another snow coming, so that they're going to delay the snow removal in the main street downtown until we get that second snow, which will save us some money. And I think it was an excellent suggestion that Mr. Zulie came up with. But I was watching TV the other night in the St. Paul and Minneapolis area. And if you, everybody can visualize cars on both sides of the street completely covered with snow along with the road that they're on or the street that they're on. And they're hauling cars away. What a difference that we have here in Hudson. And I just want to compliment the people that made that all possible.
I agree.
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. And Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of November 19th, 2007. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $490,304.94. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of six regular operators licenses for the period December 4th, 2007 through June 30th, 2009. And the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used December 6th, 2007. Additional license information is available on request in the Clerk's office. To place on file the quarterly report of the library director. That is all.
Your pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go to Finance Committee. First item is application, Hudson Chamber of Commerce for temporary Class B retailers license to sell beer and wine on 12-607 at their December Business Spotlight at Citizen State Bank, 375 Stages Line Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. Recommendation from Finances to approve that particular request.
I'm going to, yes, I'm going to add on. I'm going to renew my motion for Finance that we approve the request. But also, at our very next meeting, if that is on the 17th, that we have an agenda item to vote on whether or not to authorize Catherine to clarify this ordinance so that we're not in a murky area anymore.
Excellent. Need a second. Second discussion. Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go to Five, Review Bids and Consider Ordering Two Police Department Squad Cars For Delivery In 2008. Sergeant Marty, you want to give the council an executive summary and a recommendation from Finances to order those two vehicles?
I requested and got two bids from, one from Ewald Chevrolet, which has a state bid for squad cars in the state of Wisconsin. The other one from Holt Ford, if you'll see them right on your bid sheets there. That's for one car. If two cars, Ewald's would be $44,160 and Holt Ford's would be $43,160, or $100, I'm sorry. Holt Ford would be $1,060 cheaper this year, almost $530 apiece. What we decided to do this year for the Hudson Police Department is go to a black and white squad car. It was twofold in purpose. One being, with Ford continually changing their paint colors, including dark blue, we can constantly get a different colored car every couple of years. It's not the same tint. It always looks a little bit different. Where black and white always stays the same. Number two, it was to go to a squad car that would be more distinct for the Hudson Police Department within the community around us. St. Croix County, North Hudson, River Falls, even the State Patrol run dark blue squad cars. So when we have citizens come in and complain about a driving habit or say that an officer stopped and helped, we ask what the officer's name was. Well, he was driving a dark blue squad car. Well, that could be anybody. So it becomes a little bit more concerning for us. So we decided it was time maybe to take a change, go to a black and white squad car, which would be more distinct. People would be able to recognize that as being a squad car. And hopefully, they would recognize it as being a Hudson car.
We had allocated $60,000 for the vehicles.
Fifty-six thousand for two vehicles. The total coming out to, with going with Holt Ford's recommended bid of $43,100.
So we have enough to equip them and...
We have enough to purchase equipment and have it outfitted, both cars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I'd like to jump down a little bit to new business, plans for the 2008 walleye fishing tournament event in Hudson. And I've asked Mick Holland to give us a little summary of what's happened. This could bring about anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000 people to Hudson. And this is in October. Mick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mick Holland. I have the dry dock at Exit Four in Hudson, Wisconsin. Just a quick history on us. My family and I, we lost our dealership up in Siren to the tornado and moved to Hudson in 2001. We're happy to be here. Let's get on to it. The PWT. Everybody kind of wants to know what is the PWT. And I'm going to, you guys, I only, I just got my new magazine, so it's part of... In Fisherman, if you pass that down, here's some cards if somebody wants to call me with any questions. The professional walleye trail is what that refers to. And what it really is, it's the best of the best. And I have a list here, if you'd like to pass this around. Kind of shows you some of the cities that have this trail. And the PWT, this is the nicest part of the whole thing. If you remember about basketball in colleges, we've been invited to the big dance. And there's a substantial waiting list to get to the big dance. And we were able to convince the powers that be of the PWT, Mr. Chip Lear and Jim Cluffin, that we were worthy and could handle this kind of a project. This is a huge undertaking for the city, for the chamber. I called Kim right away after I found out and had a couple of meetings with these gentlemen that we would like to submit to get on the list to have the dance. They came to see us. And lo and behold, with a little bit of hard work and some arm twisting, the Hudson Chamber did a great job working with the dry dock and is honored, the mayor, to bring this to town. Kind of tell you a little bit about it real quick. It's the best of the best with the Super Pro Series and the Regional Open. And normally, they have the last Regional someplace and then the World Championship. Well, they liked us so much that we're getting the last Regional and the World Championship all at the same time here in Hudson. So that moved it from 60 fishermen to 120 super pros and 120 amateurs. So we'll have 240 fishermen fishing this tour on the St. Croix River. Now, to alleviate some concerns, you think about, oh, they're going to fish our fishery out. The PWT has a surprising record in what they do. They promote the following, just give you a quick list. They promote tourism. They promote your local areas. They promote the outdoors, sportsmanship, catch and release program, safe, responsible boating. They promote kids and fishing and family fishing. They promote your town, your area, and other events. And the more, the merrier. They also have been responsible and were the ones that started the program to report mill foil, zebra mussels, and so forth. So they're a, not a governing body, if you will, but they're a bunch of fishermen and pros that do care about the ecology of our fishery. Couple things. They're about education. And I think that's part of what we want to know, too, is they also let us know how strong our fishery is. The fish get tested and they all get released. And there's a financial penalty if somebody kills a fish or they have a fish die. So that's not something we should worry about. One of the things that I'm concerned about, and I do have some concerns, and that's parking. And because when you're talking about a 20-foot-plus-long pickup truck with a 22-foot trailer, it takes up more space than, say, just a car. So we have some goals to achieve to overcome that situation. And we're looking at plans to alleviate that and make it not a problem. The other thing that I'm concerned about is volunteerism. And we need to pull together as a community. I heard some comments before, and I let them go right over my head, but I'm going to speak to them just a little bit, very briefly. I would like to see us pulled together as a community. That means I don't feel that at this time and for this event, if we're going to have it, and we have a chance, if you look at that one slip, to make this an annual event that could bring 15 to 30 million dollars to our community in a 10-day period. If you think about the awesome challenge of being able to have that on an annual basis, like many of those cities, we need to not be concerned about borders or states right now about this event because we're going to need all the launch bases that we can have. The city of Hudson, probably Stillwater, maybe Afton. Troy certainly would have to help us. And I believe that if we really look at it, the Prescott may have to step up to the plate. We're going to need to play nice in the sandbox and have our neighbors give us a helping hand. So we need to look at this as our community in the St. Croix River Valley, Hudson being the host city. What a marvelous attribute this is going to be for all of us. And I'm very proud to have helped in a small part of bringing this to town. Let's look at it another way, and everybody likes this part, I think. Let's call it ringing the till. Because it is going to certainly ring the till for many businesses. And it is somewhat about money and budget. Maybe we could help add another squad car. Who knows? One of the events that we need to plan out thoroughly is about children. This is very important because that's not been set in stone at all. And they want to have, and always have, to wrap this around a children's event. And they have a 10-day event, three of which are the 16th, 17th, and 18th of October in 2008. But the weekend before that is the pre-fish. And at the pre-fish is when they want to hold a children's event. And that means we can come up with almost anything, from coloring contests in school. This is not just for boys, ladies. Think about this. I will give you an example. The FLW Tour in Red Wing last year, the lady that was the amateur, a housewife, won $65,000 in her brand-new boat motor and trailer while her husband was babysitting. So if you think about that, that's the good side. So with a lot of hard work, I don't think we've quite realized the magnitude that this presents us, this challenge. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to spread the news about tourism, help us grow, and get an event that's second to none. And maybe, just maybe, Hudson would be known for having walleyes. Thank you very much. And I will be at your assistance and work really hard to represent the city of Hudson and help this tour go.
Does anybody have questions, Mick? This is supposed to be the Super Bowl of walleye fishing. We've had a couple of meetings just laying out the preliminaries. Mick has really got all the background and connections for this particular event. And I think that as we continue to work on this from committees and also from volunteers, and also we'll be making a presentation to the park board because we're going to be using that area, I think it's important for all of us to get behind this particular event because it's probably going to be the biggest thing that we've ever hosted. And I think it's going to bring a lot of business to the area. I agree with Mick when he says, "Let's make this a Hudson-area event with Hudson being the host." It was interesting, right after we had that meeting down at the chamber, I happened to have to go out to my daughters and what was on TV but the PWT and a big tournament that was being held at Cass Lake in Minnesota. So I had a chance to really get a cross-section of what this is all about. Some fast, fantastic boats, I think. What do they have? $100,000 average in some of these boats that they have?
They sure do. They have $100,000 pretty often. And what I'd like to do is I'm going to pass this to Alderman, Virchell. And someplace in the building, until we get this all completed, I'd like to have you put up from In Fisherman Magazine, this is their logo. I have one. And so you guys get to have this. And please put it up as a reminder that we got a challenge ahead of us. I also don't want to forget, Kim has been very instrumental in the chamber, the whole chamber. Pat Shirley, right on down, everybody answering the phone, has worked really hard to bring this tour here. So, and Kim really has worked hard with these people. So she's to be congratulated on bringing that here.
Yes, sir.
Mick, is this going to be like a carnival-type event for 10 days at Lakefront Park or...
Actually, it'll be, my understanding is it's going to be at the park. They have a trailer that has a very large stage that opens up all hydraulically and with all the speakers. And my understanding is, we're in the planning stage. Kim can speak to some of this more than I can. But we're going to wrap other events into this so that there's something to do for everybody. We could do the taste walk. We talked about that. We could have just a host of other events. We, and I'd like, Kim's got some surprises there, actually, so I don't want to give too much away. I do know quite a bit of it, but I'm not going to go there yet. But not a carnival, per se, but there will be events for everybody to be involved in. And part of it is, you understand, these fishermen are going to be bringing their families to town so that they can tour the octagon house and go to our restaurants and go to the curio shops and the antique shops. And it should be just a wonderful experience for everybody. Octagon House, I think, really comes to mind. The Phipps could put on a play. Guess who's coming to dinner? It could be a walleye. You know, it could be, it could be almost, I said, sorry about the pun, but I thought I'd put that in there. No, we won't be serving walleye at the park. That can't happen, but...
Oh, I think it's important because, number one, it's going to bring a lot of dollars into the area and room tax. We're always looking for some of that so that we can propagate our tourism approach. We'll be giving an update probably on a quarterly basis, giving you more detail on what we can handle because the walleye tournament itself is enough to handle. What we do auxiliary and what we add to this particular event will be something that we want to contain that a little bit so we'd be able to handle all of this input of people that are coming here.
The phone is ringing off the hook in my office on a daily basis, just to give you guys some excitement. The PWT is the Super Bowl of the walleye tour. But the FLW, which is another walleye club, also sponsors Bassmasters, which is the Bass Tour. And they now know that we're going to host the PWT. They're calling because they know this is great bass country. So, you know, we could really become the tourism hotspot, the place to go and the place to visit. And it's very exciting. I think that we have an opportunity here to really set a pattern. And if we could get this as one of the annual events, I think it'd be a feather and a cap for the whole community always to...
I think we had a preliminary about two years ago when Pat Shirley and I were standing in the rain helping these guys launch their boats. And they had such success in the St. Croix during that time that that's what inspired them to come back.
That was the world tour, and the world walleye tour failed.
Yeah.
Didn't last as a group. It had some poor planning. And most, a lot of those pros have moved over to the PWT and the FLW tour also.
But they did identify it as a great area for walleye fishing, so... Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And we'll keep you updated. Let's go to unfinished business. Update on projects.
Kind of a tough act to follow.
Oh, you can do it, Chuck.
Just a couple of items I want to point out in regards to the projects. I thought the signaling work was to be completed last week. It did not. Tapco is scheduled to come in here tomorrow and work with staff to get the timing and get that traffic flowing better on both Cooley and 11th as well as the Crestview area. And, you know, one of the things, actually Mick pointed out before the meeting, is that he was wondering about that third left turn up there on Crestview. And I think it's important to note that it will be a triple left, as advertised, as soon as we get the overhead sign. And that's two months out. So anything we can do?
I did mention to Chuck that I had some complaint, telephone complaints about the approach on 11th Street as you come to Cooley. Because the arrows are so close to where your stop is that people are going in the left lane and then driving straight. And I think that we need some additional arrows there that tells people as they're approaching this area that, hey, one is to turn left and the other one is to go straight. So Chuck's going to work on that.
I agree with that.
But it is kind of confusing when you first approach that. And he's going to take care of that.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Tom. Possibly, we could put up a sign, kind of forewarning people as well of the two lanes. And that should help.
That would help.
Especially during the winter.
It is confusing.
Other than that, is there any other questions for me in regards to projects?
And I think it's important to note that it will be a triple left as advertised as soon as we get the overhead sign, and that's two months out. So anything we can do?
I did mention to Chuck that I had some complaint, telephone complaints about the approach on 11th Street as you come to Cooley, because the arrows are so close to where your stop is that people are going in the left lane and then driving straight. And I think that we need some additional arrows there that tells people as they're approaching this area that, hey, one is to turn left and the other one is to go straight, so Chuck's going to work on that.
I agree with that.
But it is kind of confusing when you first approach that, and he's going to take care of that.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Tom, possibly we could put up a sign, kind of forewarning people as well of the two lanes, and that should help.
That would help.
Especially during the winter.
It is confusing.
Other than that, is there any other questions for me in regards to projects?
Were you able to get the survey work done up there on...
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but I believe it's done. They were going to do that late last week, so...
Chuck, I did get a couple of phone calls before the snow on the Nice Street and Altridge Avenue deal. They were complaining about the grass that we had put down, and that they didn't feel it was at the same level as their lines. So in the spring, we better take a look at that and do something about it.
Yeah, I know when it was initially installed, there were some problems, and we forced them to come back there and address that, and we thought we had that all covered, but certainly that is a warranty item, and we will address that in the spring.
I saw them come back once or twice to work on some of that, but maybe there's still some other issues out there.
Well, I suppose with the snow, they don't realize that it has been taken care of, if it has, but I know I did get some calls on that.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And if there's specific areas, specifically, specific house addresses, we'll be sure to, you know, look at that even a little closer come spring if, you know, that information could be passed along to, say, Deb Andrews or someone.
Well, good update, and do you have any other questions, Chuck? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go to item B, extension of the sanitary sewer to Rivercrest Elementary School. Denny, can you give us a little snapshot on that?
The plans are to extend the sanitary sewer from the intersection at Industrial Street and Mayor Road east to Carmichael, then south from Carmichael to the Rivercrest Elementary School. Angela Popenhagen from Stevens Engineering, Chuck are here answering any specific questions in regards, there were comments from Chuck with issues, they're here to answer any of those questions you may have.
Everybody have any questions?
I'd like to move that this be referred to Public Works, for us to come back with answers to all of these questions and to give Angela and Chuck time to work that out, because it's just not ready yet.
Your second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, anything specific or grandiose?
Well, there's a page and a half of issues here that need to be cleared up. Most of them are of having to do with the terrain, the physical nature, that we simply need to work out, so we have answers to those questions before we ask the council to act.
Okay, could we, do you want to modify your motion to indicate that once those are satisfied, it'd be okay to go ahead with it, seeing that we're at the end of the year?
Right. If we, my plan is that we refer it now to Public Works, which will meet two weeks from tonight. Public Works will take it up, and during that time, Angela and Chuck will be able to iron out the wrinkles.
Is that all right with...
Can I, can we hear from them, or Angela?
Angela, you had some comments?
Yes, I did get the comments from Chuck. Really, a lot of these are just basically the comments as far as, first of all, if we go down, I don't know if you want to run through, but basically there is no portion that is in the township, so the road restrictions are not a problem, but I can add that there's a start date of April 1st, because our contractors will not be digging through frost, and we do not want to incur frost digging charges. So that's not a problem. We do want to get this going. The road patches, as far as the Cooley and Carmichael areas, the county is redoing those areas. They are redoing the whole intersection at Cooley and Carmichael and then going south on Carmichael, and that's why they pushed to get this project going right away in the spring, because the county wants to start May 1st on all of their intersection realignments and their road realignments, or road widening in that area. So we have been in touch with all the private utilities, there is no locates, and Excel and AT&amp;T are both on board to hold lines and hold poles as needed. The, you know, the existing grades, we do have the, you know, need to get the ASBILs basically in the specifications, it says that it needs to be replaced in the exact manner as it was, you know, that it was built in the first place, so that's not a problem. We do have items, you know, as far as there is a water line in the area, and we've addressed that, as far as it will be a remove and replace in those areas. There is a note that they need to contact the water utility, that is in the specifications right now as well. There is the tenth of a foot drop, I'm just going down the comments. It's not advised to take that out, but we can easily take it out, it gains an extra foot at the end, which, you know, is a foot of sanitary, but it's not going to get you a whole lot, so I'd rather keep the drop in there, but that's not a problem. And, let's see, type 3 barricades, it just, there was a label to one area, but it didn't go to the other area, so that's not a problem. The type 3 barricades, it is in the specifications and it is in the detail plates. There is a maintenance roadway that is, was requested to go along the sanitary sewer line while it goes through the field of the YMCA, but we do want to, as part of that, we were going to cover that with an inch of topsoil, so it's, we don't want that to be, even look anywhere remotely like a roadway. And as far as putting up a whole gate and barrier in that area, the YMCA, that's not the intent of this roadway, it's actually just a gravel drive with, you know, grass to grow over it, just so that the equipment can drive on there, but we don't want it to anywhere look like a roadway or lead to anywhere. That was a comment. So I would really, as far as a full-blown gate within a field of a YMCA, doesn't seem appropriate. As far as the revised city detail plate, the city detail plate is to have the HDPE rings, but if it has changed, I'll do that, but I did take it directly from the city's detail plates. And as far as easements, the YMCA has been a partner with the school all along. They will sign the easement, just we didn't want to go through all the legal work if it wasn't going to be appropriate. So they basically have said, you know, they will sign it, it's just we didn't know if we should proceed with it or not, just we didn't want to obtain an easement and then not have a sewer to put there. So that was kind of the chicken and egg issue. So, to make it real quick, so I think a lot of these, as far as, the only issue I would see that we'd want to do is add, we can easily add a start date on that if that is a concern, but I'm not sure if there's anything of, you know...
I did have one question.
Yep.
Bullet point number six, my understanding the sewer is never intended to serve property south of the school. Are we limiting ourselves here? Are we doing something that would absolutely prevent that in the future?
No, we are keeping it as flat and as deep as we can. We are putting the tenth of a foot drop through the manhole just to promote the flow, but we can take that out to gain an extra foot of depth, but, and I can easily do that, I mean, that's not really a change.
As we sit today, the discussion hasn't been, too, but I do want to make sure that we're not limiting our options for the future.
No, we've put it in as...
Good point. I mean, because you never know what may happen years down the road, and I think we should at least have that option open.
Well, I think your questions and your comments here are addressing the issue that, Chuck and I talked about this this afternoon. He received these plans with minimal amount of time to look them over before having to prepare this for tonight's meeting, and with a start date of next April, it's not going to be hurting anybody to spend more time to, you know, it's our infrastructure, it's their school, it's our infrastructure that we're going to have to live with, we want to do this job right. And so that's why my motion is to refer it back to Public Works. Chuck and Angela will be able to work out the wrinkles in the intervening two weeks. We'll be able to make final recommendation at our next meeting. And I see.
Any other comments?
Yeah, but in the meantime, I don't have a problem approving this tonight, as long as you were conditional on approval, that you were meeting the requirements that just kind of went through.
Right, I'll make the changes in the specification, but...
I agree with Scott, I think it should come back for final vote here after it goes to Public Works.
And we clean those up by the 17th, or what?
I don't see any reason why we can't.
Well, then...
And there's no, like you said, there's no rush.
Well, it doesn't start till next April.
We will be bidding the project on the 10th, not that that will change anything in here, but just because the school is, we do need a budget number to go in this year for this project, but...
Well, let's target for the 17th and see if we can get it done.
That'd be fine.
I think we can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Nay.
New business appointment of the election inspectors for the period of 1/108 to 12/3109. Everybody got a copy of the list? Any comments, madam?
I think both the committees did a really good job recommending their people, they paid extra attention to make sure that the workers that they were appointing were actually going to be able to be there and perform the duties, so I appreciate their help with that.
Okay, I need a motion to approve, full approval.
Second, I'd like to make the comment that these people work long hours during election time for, I believe it is $7, maybe $8 now. Eight, now we changed...
We're up to 8:50.
Eight, 8:50, oh, wow, what the heck then. For 8:50 an hour, they do long hours. Many, some of these people are of a certain age, and they be put in a long day for us, and I think they're to be commended for that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Let's go to B, consider amendment to the municipal code, chapter 207 regarding annual solid waste collection, license, recycling permits, ordinance number 17-07 or ordinance number 1-08, depending on the possible adoption date. Denny's been working on this for a couple of weeks.
I just want to introduce this topic tonight. I've had some more lengthy conversations with Scott O'Malley. Essentially what's happening is we, Nancy's office was contacted by a recycling service to have a free electronics pickup scheduled for December 1st at Target. Target was not agreeable to doing it at their location due to retail sales. Then they went to Econo Foods, asked for it to be on the 8th. Again, Econo Foods is concerned about the effects on the retail sales, particularly this time of year. Now I see that it is advertised to occur at Faith Community Church on Saturday, December 8th. Some of these recent recycling events have drawn a lot of traffic, and my concern is, one, do we have a license or credible recycling service that's doing this work? And secondly, that we know enough information if something's going to be done inside the city of Hudson, that we don't have an event that creates a problem for the public, particularly in the concern of traffic, and particularly on a roadway such as Cooley Road, that if we do have backups of vehicles and so forth at those sites, we could have a considerable issue with our traffic within the community. Also, I see a local resident, not too long ago, last Friday, we saw the sign for the first time, is now having recycling drop-offs at the residential property.
Yeah, so...
Which is a little concerning also. So I just want to introduce this, is that traffic, the fact that electronics, in many cases, have ingredients or materials within those electronics that are, contain hazardous waste. And I believe that at least we ought to explore this issue of requiring permits for recycling events, so we know what's going on, you know, we have opportunity to see who is sponsoring or who the provider service is, and we can put any conditions on those permits that we feel is fair. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to create something that's so burdensome, because I think to be able to recycle electronics free is a very positive thing, it's just a matter of how it occurs.
Denny, is Faith Community Church on the sidelines?
No, it's not.
Move to authorize Denny to work with our council to revise the amendment of the code, the code, chapter 207, so that the council can consider changes to that code.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Very none? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a draft brought back for next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We talked about the walleye fishing tournament, communication recommendations with the mayor. Again, I want to thank our Public Works people for doing a fantastic job on the snow removal. And now we're at communications and items for future agendas without discussion. Any alter person?
I'd like to bring up again for about the eighth time the exit 1A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we can do or talk about, or put it on the agenda for next week to try and move forward to see if that's a possibility.
You and I had talked about that, and it seems to me there was a summary in the, it was either the St. Paul paper or Hudson Star Observer regarding plans for 94 and some of the restructuring of that from the St. Croix River's inward. So we should pick that up and see exactly what those plans are, and if there's some meetings, we should go to that and say, hey, while you're doing that, why don't you consider opening that particular exit? I think it would be a good...
In hand-in-hand with that is the traffic study. Denny, I don't know where we're at on the traffic study for Carmichael and Vine Street.
We got some problems with that.
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not a problem, it's more of a timing consideration. I was hoping to set up a meeting here December 11th or 13th with the common council and the planning commission. Shelley Johnson, who's working on it, specific study, has been under the weather for last week, and it's been put, and so his timing elements, it's been delayed. Asking if it'd be possible to still meet 11th or 13th, he said, no, he really didn't think he can meet that. And we get past the end of that next week, we're right before Christmas. So the reality of it is probably before January 1st, before we really take a serious look at that particular issue, so...
Anyone else?
But I guess what I would suggest on this particular issue is that if Jack would like, the writer authorized, Jack can write a letter, at least introduce the subject to the District 6 office, get that introduced, and bring it back for discussions at the next council meeting.
Somebody want to make that motion?
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Any other alter person?
Just to follow up on that letter that I gave Scott with Viola, and increasing the rates of garbage disposal in the city, Scott's going to look into that.
We're going to take a look at that, because I...
At the Public Works, yeah.
Yeah, I personally negotiated a five-year contract, which we're only in the middle of right now, and it does not call for a rate increase, so I'll be talking that over with Viola.
Good. Talking about license issuing, I got two notices for renewing my license for my cars, they're now at $85, and I noticed also that there's a $10 county wheel tags included in that. It's too bad we don't have that option to do the same thing in the city.
Are you saying that every single entity in the state of Wisconsin gets to raise taxes except us? Because I think that's the way it is.
Pretty much so, yeah. Any other alter person? City attorney? City administrator?
We hope to have the information to the county by the end of the week, so there should not be any issue with people having their tax bills by, you know, the end of the year, so...
I see we had a little notice from the school board on how much money they lost by not, by the delay in the budget. Did everybody get a copy of that? Somebody had a copy here. Okay, that's it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Thank you very much.